Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Councilman Jindon.
President.
Councilman Lennart. Mayor Paton Daly.
Here.
Mayor Duper.
President.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We're going to start off with an invocation and pledge of allegiance by Dr. Lennart.
Father in heaven, we thank you so much for your guidance and your care for us and your watch care over us. We pray for your guidance here in this meeting that we'll come to the right decisions that are best for our beautiful city and our citizens. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted? No, sir. Thank you. We're going to move on to public participation. This is a chance for anyone to speak on something that is not on the agenda. If you did submit a card where you wanted to speak about an agendized item, we'll call you up when we get to that item. So looking through all of my cards, they're all for non-agendized items, so I will go in order they were turned in. First is Ms. Maya Ship. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Mia Ship. I am eight years old. Wait, I'm not saying it right.
You can start over.
I'm not saying it right. How can I say it? Wait.
You're doing great.
You're doing great.
Hi, my na- wait, hi, my name is Mia Ship.
Okay, that wasn't your fault.
Okay, try it again.
Hi, my name is Mia Ship. I am eight years old. I live in Loma Linda. And my friend Will Crass, we believe that people should have a voice in their community. I believe that people should be treated fairly, even if they are African-American, gay, Mexican, Native American person. My hope is that my mother can make it through. Is that what I said? Thank you.
Do you want to state? Okay. Thank you very much. And Ms. Bernadine Irwin.
That's Dr. Bernadine Irwin. Three quick items. Number one, my friend Paul Pork was killed on Benton Street when a driver was breaking the speed limit and driving and struck him down. And he was taken immediately to the hospital where he suffered, where his family suffered, and eventually died. I assume the city heard about that. Nothing has been done to create less speeding on that short strip where I personally have clocked people going from zero to max. So it's a wonder that one of my friends who lives at the villa and walk have not also been struck and killed. When I was running for one of these seats, safety was the thing I heard about more than anything else. And I promised I would be a voice for safety. And that is why I'm speaking now. Number two, there was an 11-year-old who she and her mother were killed as they were headed to Loma Linda Middle School, leaving a nine-year-old boy and a husband. I think it would be appropriate for the city to reach out with condolences and to perhaps interact with the city of Redlands regarding at least speed bumps or something. There's an arm that apparently was plowed through. Number three, when I ran for city council, two police officers were sent, they said, "By you," to where I live, to make false accusations. And I had now moved to Redlands.
Thank you very much.
I guess I would add, since I was a woman and since there have been a long, long, long history of almost 100% only men on the city council, I represent women. And we don't understand why there was slander, why there were the vicious actions taken.
Okay. Thank you, Bernadine. Your time's up.
Can you tell me where that was, the first one you were saying where he was struck down?
Benton Street.
Benton and?
Benton, where it intersects, I think it's Shepherd, is it?
Oh, down by the, right by the retirement.
It's Benton Street, seven five Benton.
So the car that struck was traveling fast down Benton or down Shepherd's?
Benton.
Benton. And the other one by the, was it by the academy, the second?
No, that was in Redlands. It was the train.
No, it was two, it was two individuals that go to school here.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And for the record, there have been several very courageous and honored women on our city council, even going back to the founding of this city. So we encourage that and support equality and equity with everybody. So thank you, Bernadine. Hopefully you're not jumping around in a plane in the fountain like you were last year also.
I was never in the fountain.
Okay. All right. Ms. Karen McCullough.
Good evening, council. My name is Karen McCullough, and as y'all know, I run the chamber. I am here on behalf of several businesses that have contacted me requesting that we ask city council to revisit alcohol and drive-through codes. Businesses, restaurants, especially down in hospitality, before they all closed, were checking into Loma Linda, and when they found out there was no alcohol, they, restaurants can't make it without alcohol. I'm not asking that you put Jack's Pool Hall next to the market, but Area D would be a great area to allow restaurants. There's been a coffee shop that contacted the city. Their business model is just drive-through. And when they found out we didn't allow any more drive-throughs, they went ahead, they went someplace else. When they opened in Ukaypa, there was a six-hour waiting for the line. It would be a great addition to Loma Linda. All we have is Starbucks. It would be great competition. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Quick question. Alcohol is allowed in Area D. Isn't alcohol allowed in Area D?
It's a sit-down service is the issue. And so there's a lot of restaurants that have a business model where sit-down service is part of their business model. For example, Applebee's actually approached us and they were looking at the intersection of Anderson and Redlands Boulevard a couple of years ago, but when they found out, we don't allow that, at least in that area. And within a certain distance of the university, it was kind of a nonstarter for them. So we do kind of have a hodgepodge. It's kind of hard to describe it or explain it. We have different rules kind of depending on the development, but we definitely have, we passed an ordinance to not allow any further drive-throughs in the city, and that was done around 2012, I think.
Thank you.
Sir.
So anywhere in the city, we're not, we're not, because in the past?
We have, we have B and Y at the grocery store, even more than, is it 5,000 square feet?
30,000 square feet for groceries.
Yeah, 30,000 square feet for grocery stores, so they can sell B and wine. That's, that's, I can't remember the numbers, square foot. It's free, like state and brother across the street. But they cannot sell hot liquor, and the same thing with the restaurant, we not allow alcohol.
As far as the drive-throughs though, I think, I think in the, in the past, weren't we allowing them kind of like on Redlands but not on Barton? And then the ordinance is they're not in?
It's a new code that happened right after McDonald came to town and due to proving.
Excuse me, to clarify, it does say in all zoning codes that drive-throughs are not allowed throughout the city. And in terms of alcohol, it does clearly say it's allowed in restaurant, beer and wine. The square-footed restriction was removed a few years ago, so I just wanted to make that clear. Yeah.
But it has to be a place with table service or an extra?
Exactly. So you would need a waitress to come serve it to, other than, like you were saying, the example, Applebee's or an Islands that has a bar where you can sit at the bar to order drinks and food. That would not be permitted in Loma Linda right now as the code is written.
One more thing. The alcohol, we would have to change state law to make that okay. And then for the drive-through, that would have to be a city council action, right?
Not, not, not the state law. It's a city.
Both would be city council action.
Yes. Say it again? You know more about it than I do.
Well, there's been a report for decades that there's something in the California constitution preventing alcohol sales within a certain distance of Loma Linda University. And what constitutes the edge or the center of Loma Linda University is a mystery to me. Because it's, it's a sprawling campus that, that has locations all over Southern California.
Okay, moving on, Ms. Maria Montes.
Sorry, I'm short. Okay. Mr. Ingalls, okay. Good evening, members. My name is Maria Montes, and I'm a resident here at Loma Linda. I live on Juanita Street. I'm here to voice my concerns. One, members, have you driven down Juanita Street? Yes, there are very old homes, and west of the street are new homes. But have you recently seen Juanita Street, how it looks today? Join me. I'm more than happy to walk with you, to show you how it looks. I have pictures, and it's sad. The grass is four feet high or more. Bushes and weeds have all, but swallowed up the vacant lots, especially where the mailboxes are located. There are some homes with cars piled up in front of the yards, looking like a parking lot. There's a house towards the end of the street, which I have complained and submitted pictures. The house put pavement stones in front of the yard, or the house, and has cars parked in front of the home. I believe there's an ordinance that it's 4950, that you have to have dirt, grass, something living, and then the other half has to be cement, which I know, because I wanted to put custom pavers, and they told me no. So I believe there's a rule of 4050. Nothing has been done. It's been about a year, and it's still there. No one from the city has came taking care of this. Plus, it's a code violation. Have the residents of these homes been advised to cut down the weed, the, cut down the weeds and remove the broken-down cars in front of the homes? It's not healthy, and it's a safety concern. I myself, again, have complained, have a complaint on file with my neighbor having a six-feet-plus plywood in the backyard, which is, it's not by the ordinance. And I've also complained about the line of sight. So when I pull out of my car, I see nothing but a fence covered with tarp and whatnot. And I believe that's an ordinance as well. It's a side of line. So I have marked a date and hope to see the code enforcement return in 30 days, which is May 3, and we address this violation. I did leave a message to Mr. Ingalls. He never returned my call, but Mr. Garza did come and contact me, so I appreciate that. Thank you. I feel if the street was on the other side of the train tracks near the city hall here, or even by the hospital, these concerns, or it'd be a sore eye, they would be addressed quicker than just, you know, we're in a little hole. So nobody sees what we residents see. And the second, as you know, there's homes on the west side of the street, which means more people. However, there's a good crowd of young people driving down the street as if it's a freeway. I am asking you members to come up with a solution to help slow down these youngsters driving on the street like it's a freeway. You don't see it because you don't live there, but I do, and many of the residents do. These issues aren't just between the hours of 8:00 to 5:00. Yes, I do see the code enforcement to drive down about two times a day and give parking tickets. Pretty much, that's all I see. They're supposed to, their majority, it's super early in the morning or in the evening when people come home. I can show you. I have cameras on my house, so you can see how fast they're going up and down the street. One idea I have come in place, you know, I thought of maybe speed bumps. We can have speed bumps down the street where these cars can slow down. It'll keep our kids, who are always outside and walking down the street, safe, and at the same time, help reduce the cars zooming down the street. Thank you for your time, and I hope to hear from one of your council members. And one thing I do want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you for bringing the prayer, not leaving it out, because there's a lot of cities who are leaving it out and giving the pledge of allegiance. And you may not have hear it from other people, but a lot of people will know now that that is still here. And God bless you guys all. And again, I'm very happy to hear that you guys keep prayer before beginning of the meeting.
Please email me, call me, and I go down that street a lot, so I do know.
Well, have you seen it later?
I, I, are you, sweet, thank you, I will.
Thank you.
Are you talking about speeding on Juanita Street itself?
Yes.
Or on Mayberry around there?
Juanita Street.
On Juanita Street itself?
Yes. There's always cars. I mean, my ring bell is always ding, 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 because I'm always seeing these cars drive by all the time. So, I mean, there's kids. I have kids. There's especially, there's kids right in front as you go down. There's a whole bunch of kids that are, they're just sitting down playing and whatnot, but man, these cars just, there's times we have to stand in front of the street to say, "Slow down." I mean, I have, you know, people have been living there for many, many years, except for the newer homes. But it's just, it's sad to see, sad to see. But thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dick Wiley.
Yes. I got it. You got it, yeah. Dick Wiley, Loma Linda. I'd like to request that maybe we can work with Colton, Grand Terrace, and any other cities that have a problem with the music from the Orange Show. On, I believe it was April 1st, there was a, what we hear is the deep boom sound. Just like you get some of these great big boom boxes in the car when they drive by, it's boom, ba-boom, ba-boom. And it went from 9:00 to 2:15 a.m. And this is the time we're starting. This is the warm season. They're gonna have more of those over there. San Diego needs the money. And, you know, they're gonna fight it. But this was brought up over two years ago, and we're still having that same effect. Conrad has been well aware of this, all of that. She's the one that's now city manager on Grand Terrace. And they've had complaints, I know, for two to three years over there. And I think it's early enough that we can do something to nip it in the butt. I don't know how many people in this town can hear it. You know, when you go to bed and shut the TV off, you might hear it. But otherwise, you can sit there and go to bed, and it's boom, da-boom, da-boom. And, you know, I try to keep track of it. So I'm deciding now what I'm gonna do is I will look at the wind direction and the speed and see what the indicators might be. The more wind, maybe we're gonna have more sound out of it. I don't know. But there is, was at least a monitor at Conrad's house, and they're all gonna work with him on this. So if we start now, it's not after the seasons, and nobody's complained. So I'd appreciate that.
Thanks, Dick.
As you know, this isn't a new issue. We've discussed this before, and as you point out, Conrad kind of took the lead on this. And I don't know if we've had any report back from him in the last couple of years, but the, the, there was a formal agreement between Orange Show Grounds and the city of Loma Linda. And Conrad was kind of the designated monitor and had the equipment and so forth. I can tell you that from my house, inside, we don't hear it. If I take the dog for a walk outside, we do hear it. So I, I agree with you. I think it's time to kind of reassess just where we're at with that.
And it is. I, matter of fact, I just have lunch with both Conrad and Bill Smith from Colton today. And, and the noise issue actually has to be better, because, because they have a lot more monitoring now than before.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's drifting over here. I'm not sure what the metrics are to measure that, but I think it's a good point that we need to look into.
How often is it happening? Is it several times a week, once a week? Just Saturday night?
It, it, no, I mean, how many, it's five times a year now. But it's, we have Friday, Saturday, how many, Sunday? I have a schedule, so, and I have four numbers.
So several times throughout the summer of a couple nights a time?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
It goes into the, it's pretty much all year round too, because they do big stuff at Halloween and New Year's and stuff like that. So it's probably, I don't know, Casey, I know you guys do the, up there on the hill, but do they give you the schedule for down here at the Orange Show or no?
Yes.
It's probably what, like, six, seven times a year that they do events, or is it more than that? Okay. And, and I know that they crammed a bunch of extra ones in last year because they didn't have them during COVID, and they had to, they didn't want to refund people money, so they held events. Yeah. So, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, if it, if it really gets bad again, that we, I mentioned this before, that we maybe have the city attorney's office look into something where we do something official, because, but let's see. I don't think we've had anything yet this year, but if they're not cooperative with us, that's all right. Anyone else wishing to speak on any non-agendized item? Seeing nobody come forward, we're gonna move on to our scheduled items. We have four proclamations, beginning with World Wish Day. And do we have any representative? Oh, come on down.
Hello. I'm Melissa Gallagher. I'm the vice president of mission delivery at Lake Forest, Orange County and the Inland Empire.
Well, thank you for coming. We'll just go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas every 20 minutes, a child is diagnosed with a critical illness, and the Make-A-Wish Foundation has a mission to grant the wish of every eligible child. And whereas for every wish we grant, there are three more children with critical illnesses whose wishes need financial support. And whereas Make-A-Wish, Orange County, and the Inland Empire celebrates its 40th anniversary of granting over 7,800 wishes to children with critical illnesses in Orange Riverside and San Bernardino counties. And whereas 95% of Wish alumni felt more hopeful for their future after their wish, we believe that, just as they have had for the last 40 years, wish experiences will continue to play a vital role in a child's treatment, serve as an encouragement on a family's journey, and provide a source of inspiration for millions of people. And 90% of medical professionals say they have observed children increasing their compliance with treatment after learning they would receive a wish. Wish parents and families see their children's wish as a turning point in their treatment, giving their child strength and a sense of empowerment. Medical professionals report that a wish is necessary part of a child's treatment. And whereas World Wish Day is a national Make-A-Wish event that commemorates 43 years since our first wish and celebrates our mission of creating life-changing wishes for children with critical illnesses, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Loma Linda hereby proclaims April 29th as World Wish Day throughout the city of Loma Linda. Signed and presented on this 11th day of April 2023. So would you like to make some comments or?
Sure.
Maybe take some questions if we have them?
Sure. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you on behalf of our organization and all the families we serve. We work very closely with Loma Linda Hospital. We grant a lot of wishes for children from the hospital locally. And as you mentioned, we've granted over 7,800 wishes since we started, so it's very exciting. We have a lot of kids we're waiting to serve. We have over 500 kids that we're currently working with to grant wishes for them. So we just appreciate your time and the proclamation to acknowledge this wonderful experience, and also Happy World Wish Day, April 29th. So thank you for celebrating with us.
Thank you very much. If there is, if someone was interested in helping, how would they do that?
Sure, that's a very good question. Thank you. So they can go directly onto our website. We take volunteers. We are always looking for people to help us grant more wishes. We desperately need more Spanish-speaking volunteers, so if you know of Spanish-speaking volunteers, or folks that like to get more involved, it's a wonderful, wonderful way to give back. And then obviously, we would love more funding. So if anybody knows of an organization or a group that would like to get more involved with Make-A-Wish, they can just reach out to us directly on our website.
Okay. And what's the, what's the best wish you've ever seen granted?
Oh, God, there's so many. I could probably, I mean, we obviously do, we do five types of wishes. So we grant to meet wishes, which you guys have all probably seen, where they meet a celebrity or they'll meet a movie star or someone like that. So that's always fun. But just seeing kids that, when you see the smile on their face, when they get something that is really life-changing, the little things that really change their life are the things that make such an impact and long, long-term memories for the family. So they do trips. We do tons of Disney wishes. We do puppies. We do anything you can think of. The ones that I think are the most impactful is sometimes our kids will even choose to give. And that's so selfless, and so you, you just, you just can't imagine that a kid would do that, you know, when they have the opportunity to choose something, and they choose to give. So we do a lot of that as well. So I'd say those are the ones that really tug at my heartstrings, so. And I've been with Make-A-Wish for 10 years, so seen a lot of wishes, but everyone is unique and special. So again, thank you so much for having me.
Got a question. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
I know the Make-A-Wish Foundation is very active in the United States. Do you have a worldwide presence as well?
We do. We're global. That's a very good question. So we have Make-A-Wish all over the world. So recently, we had our annual national conference, and it was a global experience. So there were people from Make-A-Wish, Spain, Ireland, India, everywhere, everywhere you can think of, Mexico, everywhere. So it is a global experience. So we have kids that come from other countries to come, to go to Disneyland or to go to see the ocean. I mean, just anything that you can think of. So it is a global experience. So we have Make-A-Wish America, which is located in Arizona. That's our headquarters for local, for wishes within the United States. But then we have Make-A-Wish International as well, that serves the rest of the world, which is just, it's phenomenal. It's really cool. So thank you for asking. That's a really good question.
Thank you. And come on up, and we can give you this here? Yeah, absolutely. Come on, everybody, come on up. Ron? Should we, should we go, should we go down? We should probably go down. Well, we're gonna be doing, we're gonna be doing this all day.
Stay right here. You probably stand here.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you for all of this.
So unfortunately, as we, as we think about our children, we also have some of those life challenges. And the next proclamation And the next proclamation is for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Is there anyone here representing on this one? No?
No, they weren't able to attend.
Okay. This proclamation, and I'm going to spare going through this one since, since there's no one here to receive it, but this is to declare a Child Abuse Prevention Month here in the city and that the City Council of the City of Loma Linda does proclaim April 23 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. City of Loma Linda encourages citizens, organizations, schools, nonprofits, businesses, and other entities in the community to engage in activities and events that assist in the efforts to prevent child abuse and provide for children's physical, emotional, and developmental needs. Proclamation number three is Donate Life Month. Hi, come on down.
Hello, I'm Kat and I'm a donor mom.
I'll just read this one. Whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts, recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. And whereas more than 100,000 individuals nationwide and more than 20,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list and an average of 17 people pass away each day while waiting. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. Whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others. And whereas organ donors have saved more than 42,000 lives last year, the most ever. And whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions. And whereas being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency. And whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org or for Spanish speakers, www.donvidaacalifornia.org. And whereas California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. And whereas California residents interested in life-saving through living kidney donation may visit www.livingdonationcalifornia.org. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Loma Linda does hereby proclaim April 2023 DMV Donate Life Month in the City of Loma Linda. And in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes online or when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the DMV. This is signed and presented this 11th day of April 2023. And I believe we've seen you before.
Yeah, actually you haven't.
Oh, okay.
You've seen someone like me. So my name is Kat. I am the mother of three. My 11-year-old son Christopher was autistic. He was in the sixth grade. He loved trains and Batman. And unlike many autistic children, he didn't shy away from affection. He was the first one to want a hug or to need to cuddle. And he would come barreling into a room, like caveman style, barreling into a room just to shout, "I love you." I really miss that, hugging my big little boy and hearing him tell me he loves me. Almost five and a half years ago, he accidentally suffocated in his therapy swing in our home. He was rushed to Kaiser. Kaiser immediately sent him here to Loma Linda Children's Hospital. Unfortunately, after exhaustive efforts, they were unable to save him. But because of the hard work and the dedication of the healthcare providers, Christopher was able to save five lives through organ and tissue donation. His kidney and pancreas went to one man. His liver went to another man. Both of his heart valves went to children under the age of five. But Chris's other kidney went to this amazing little boy named Eddie. Eddie was born with this plastic kidney disease and spent the first three and a half years of his life in and out of hospitals, fighting for his life. When his family finally got the call that there was a kidney for Eddie, he was on dialysis 10 hours a day. Like I said, that was almost five and a half years ago. Today, Eddie is an energetic and active nine-year-old. He plays baseball and soccer and the violin, and he is in the third grade. And although Chris will never again go to school or play outside, I now have the great joy and pleasure of watching this little man live his very best life because of my little man. Christopher used to tell us he was a cyborg made up of different parts and pieces. And whenever he was sick or injured, he would tell us he could swap out his old pieces for new ones. As you can imagine, we never had a conversation with our 11-year-old son about what he would want us to do if he were to suddenly pass. But I take comfort in knowing that if he had the choice, this is the one he would have made. His cyborg dreams are now a reality. There are still 105,000 people waiting for the gift of life. 22,000 of them are living here in California. Anything that we can do to help make people more aware of this amazing life-saving gift, we really need to do. Christopher is gone, but he lives on in others. He is gone, but he is not forgotten. And because of the gift of organ and tissue donation, he's not only remembered by us, his family and friends, but by the family and the friends of the lives that he helped save. And for that, I will forever be grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Can I also have a picture?
Absolutely. Proclamation number four is actually a proclamation for the Inland Empire Ronald McDonald House 2023 Walk for Kids fundraiser, which occurs later this month at the end of April. And we'll not read this one either, but the City Council of the City of Loma Linda hereby proclaims that the 2023 Walk for Kids fundraiser be a memorable and successful event for the Inland Empire Ronald McDonald House, who we wholeheartedly support. Okay, we'll move on to our first public hearing. Mr. City Manager, on the Council Bill R-2023-04.
Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, there's no formal presentation tonight, but I will briefly explain why we're requesting it. You might recall that this council adopted the Development Impact Fee Nexus Report Study and Master's Facility Plan in June of last year. Typically, cities adopt a new report every five years. Unfortunately, with the pandemic, it took us about seven or eight years, but we finally got it adopted. As a reminder for those of you guys that don't know what development impact fees are, basically they are fees that the developer must pay to help offset the costs of future public facilities and infrastructure. Nonetheless, we did get it adopted and it had all the content and information needed, including regional transportation information. Unfortunately, staff inadvertently left off the table at the end, the appendix. So it, it was missing. So what we're doing tonight is just bringing forward just the appendix, Appendix G, which are the clear, the, the table and the numbers for regional transportation fees when we work with SBCTA to get those projects funded and completed. And also with this staff report, we included Appendix H. Appendix H are the findings, findings to allow us to charge development impact fees as a per-unit basis for residential projects instead of square footage, which we believe that is the fairer way to do it. Today's law that just went into effect July 1st of 2022 requires these findings. So we figured, because we're bringing forward Appendix G to you, that we'll go ahead and include these findings within the report that we already adopted last year. So what we are asking today is similar to last time. There's two resolutions similar to last time. The first one is just to adopt the two appendices. The second one is the urgency resolution to go into effect immediately. Urgency resolutions are typical in the region when it comes to impact fees, again, because they are to offset future public facilities and infrastructure. So again, this isn't a new study or a new report. This is just the missing appendices. We do have the consultant with us tonight that helped draft the entire study as well as the appendices to answer any technical or formal questions that you guys have regarding this report.
If there's any questions, we do have a public hearing, so we have to hold a public hearing. Seeing, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward? Okay, seeing nobody, close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, oh, go ahead, Dusty.
I'll move that we adopt Council Bill R-2023-04, a resolution to adopt Appendix GNH in the Development Impact Fee calculation update nexus report.
Okay, okay.
You need a second before I can say.
I have a second.
I, I've got several issues to raise with this. One is that I, I want to begin by apologizing that I usually do my homework with the agenda packet at least a day or two or three in advance. Today, I, I only had the afternoon. And this may be a situation where too much information creates problems. I, I do have challenges with this. I have challenges in, in the basic premise that square feet doesn't apply. But, and I've got, I've got all kinds of markings and notes and arrows and typical of kind of an academic, I guess. But the, what I, what I want to do, I don't want to go get into all the weeds on this because that'll drive the, my colleagues on the council crazy. But I, I guess I want to start with a broad question and that is on page four of four in the staff report. At the top of the page, it says, "At this time, there is a current and immediate threat to the public health, welfare, and safety in that the city will be receiving applications for significant development projects in the next 60 days," and then it goes on from there. What is the metric to determine what an immediate threat to public health, welfare, and safety is? And who makes that decision? I'm, I'm struggling because I will tell you, let, let me jump past myself here for a moment. In reviewing all of this, particularly in Attachment H, the statistical analogies are appropriate at times, weak at other times, and so weak they're distracting at other times. I think Attachment number, letter A, H is weak and I could spend more time than we have tonight to, to be more specific about that. But again, we're talking about a lot of money here. What is it, $333 million? That the city staff and RCS, which is Revenue and Cost Specialist, that's the consultant, right? Three hundred, almost $334 million that this could potentially impact. So this, this, you know, I'm not willing to just vote this through until we understand the basis of what we're deciding. So back to the original question, what is the immediate threat and how do we determine that?
Yes, the council is actually the one that makes that determination. The standard is whether it affects public safety, public use facilities and such. And the, the reason for the urgency ordinance is that the regular resolution does not take effect for 60 days. So if we want the increased fees to go into effect during that 60-day period, in order to do that, the council would have to determine that there is an urgency. Four-fifths of you would have to make that determination. And the reason, and the urgency reason is that the city would lose out on the increased fees otherwise for the next 60 days. And those increased fees are needed to pay for the infrastructure and such for these projects, any projects that may come to us in the next 60 days.
If I may, I did want to clarify to, to add to Diane. It's only, only solely the SBCTA regional transportation fees. Everything else, all the other fees are already in effect. So basically what we're working off in our development impact fees, every time that we provide them to developers, it has all of the. Our development impact fee sheet has all of the 2022 fees that we adopted. However, in one little specific section for the regional transportation fees, we have the 2015 numbers because we didn't formally adopt the appendix. But no matter what, the other fees have already been approved and are already in effect. It's just one specific category, the regional transportation fee is not in effect. So that's why we're asking for the urgency ordinance, that way it can match with the other fees.
And, go ahead.
Can I, can I ask, if we didn't collect those fees, who would have to pay SBCTA?
They would fall back to the 2015 numbers.
Which is, what is the comparison?
Is there a percentage comparison?
And are those numbers imposed by SBCTA or by us arbitrarily?
Hello, Scott Thorp with Revenue and Cost Specialist. The additional fees in G apply for the SB, I'm sorry, it's a new term.
SBCTA.
SBCTA.
You said Sandag. Sandag.
Sandag, that's what I'm, it'll take a while, but I'm not going to go there. Anyway, that's monies that SBCTA will ask you for at some point. And if you don't have it, you'll probably have to make up the difference in some fashion. So in other words, it's based upon the projects that they said, you're part of this to 69% or this to 17%. And then the number derives from that. And then you'll collect it from developers. And then as SBCTA asks you for it, they'll send you a, a check register asking you to send, you know, approve it and send it to SBCTA. So you'd have to deal with the delta between the two. And I don't have the old report in front of me, so I don't know what the old fees were. But I'm thinking, what percent did we apply to most? Okay.
Is it significant?
It has to be.
Thirty-four million dollars, whatever the delta was.
I don't think that's.
It was the engineering news record for the past seven years. So I'm going to say 18, 19%?
But this, this gets to one of my concerns and pardon me for my mathematics background. But under financial impact in the staff report, it says, SBCTA circulation projects could potentially provide the necessary funding. I'm not accustomed to this kind of wishy-washy projection, you know. I'd like to know what are the projections based upon? And based on those projections, would it cover those fees?
The land use database shows what, what developments anticipated in the city through build-out, general plan build-out, which is one of the reasons why we feel that per unit is better because a unit is a unit is a unit. Whereas if we do it by square feet, this one could be 2,800 square feet. This one could be 1,200 square feet. And you would have to adopt a figure that is your average square feet for a single-family home or detached home. And if you're low, you'd overcollect. If you're too high, you'll undercollect. But if these, those units are built, But if those units are built, you can be more assured of what the collection will be so that you can use a more firm statement like, "We will collect the money we need to pay to SBCTA."
Yeah, and I read Appendix H carefully a couple of times. So I understand the rationale for not using square footage and using unit dwellings. But I have to tell you that the impression I had after going through staff report and the appendices is that two plus two equals five, meaning the goal is five. We need to collect this money or we're in trouble. I don't know what kind of trouble, sounds like we'll be short money. But it doesn't, in my view, justify the twisting and some of the analogies that were described in Appendix H. And so ultimately, I guess my question at this point is, I understand that developers are anxious to get their developments approved and get started. Got that. I'm trying to understand, I'm not worried about the developers, you know? I'm more, I'm less interested in efficiency than that we have quality product at the other end. And if that takes us an extra month or two or three, whatever it takes, I'm willing to make that sacrifice. But I'm not entirely clear on just what we're risking by saying, "We want to be sure we understand this fully before we approve it." And my impression at this point is that, well, we didn't go to SBCTA, and so they may charge us a bunch of money that we're not sure we have, and this way we can raise the fees. And the qualifiers in this were troubling to me. SBCTA circulation projects could potentially, well, could, in my world, could mean anything. I want to know upon, what are the, what's the basis? What are the projections that we're basing whether it would or it would not? And whether those are realistic or not? And then I can go through the rest of my packet, but you don't want me to, where there are these qualifiers in there that make it very uncomfortable for me. I don't know, I mean, it's easy just to vote it. But I'm not convinced that we're just, that there's just a table in here that we're adding. I'm not convinced of that.
This table was included in the effort seven years ago, and the projects from SBCTA have not changed at all. All we did was we recognized that over seven, eight, nine years, the engineering news record for construction cost index has gone up about anywhere from 16 to 20%. So we applied that to it because your purchasing power has dropped by that amount over the seven, eight years, which is the main reason that you do an impact fee update, because, you know, we estimate, oh, goodness, fire stations. Do any of you remember when fire stations were $350 a square feet? I do. Jarb, I know you do too. They've gone far beyond that. So if you don't update your impact fees, you're collecting 2012 money, and you're paying for 2023 projects.
And I understand the point you're making, I do. I just don't think the evidence is there to document it, that we're making projections that are not documented. My colleagues on the...
We use the engineering news record, which is very, very respected among the engineering community.
Okay, well, we can sit across the table and discuss that. I'm not doubting what you're telling me. I'm telling you that if, that collectively, those kinds of policies are policies, and to try to associate numbers with that needs to be based on some kind of projections, and I don't see those. Now, the closest we get to it, and for my colleagues on the council, I'm looking at page 126, Appendix G2, and there's a column called Allocation of Expansion Costs, and it's very specific. And then if I flip to the next page, 127, there are projects in here, and some of this makes sense, some of this frankly came as a surprise to me. Now, these are the projects that are, two that are completed and the remaining are not completed. Tippit Canoe Interchange, $0, that's completed, I understand that. Mountain View Interchange, I thought that was completed, but I guess it's not. And so I'm perplexed with that. I don't know what, I don't know what we're spending $65 million on for the, I'm all for it because I get stuck at that intersection all the time. California Interchange, I didn't know that was going to be modified. Widen Barton Road from four to six lanes, a million bucks. That sounds like a good idea, but I didn't know about it. Widen California from two lanes to six lanes. Okay, I knew we were going to open it up to four lanes, six lanes surprised me. Now, this may be, I had dozed off in a city council meeting, so I'm not blaming anybody. Widen Evans from zero to four lanes. Widen Mountain View, it's a project that's completed. Widen Redlands Boulevard from four to six lanes, I don't recall that. So, you know, there's a lot of new stuff in here, and we're talking about a lot of money. We're making projections based on what we anticipate. SBCTA is going to charge the city, and I'm not confident in the rationale, let alone the data, to support that. So I want to pay our bills. I want to budget in a way that we will, we're confident we'll be able to pay our bills. But boy, man, I felt like I was swimming upstream without a paddle when I was going through this. Now, again, I'm not blaming anybody. This may be my own limitation. We've got four other members of the city council on here.
Can I give my perspective? I've been on the Sandbag, I still call it Sandbag. I think SUBCTA is an extremely bad acronym. It's an initialism, so I prefer Sandbag. Some people think it's a derogatory reference to a verb that involves fooling people. But, just to give some perspective, Sandbag does a Nexus study about once every umpteen years where they decide which projects in our county shall be done and in what order. And it also calculates the local share for each one. So each one says, let's say, let's talk about the Mountain View Interchange. We did a little piddly thing to the Mountain View Interchange and got some money from Caltrans, but that has nothing to do with this. This is a total redo of Mountain View. Sandbag has that in their Nexus study. Well, the funding isn't there to do that for the next 10-plus years, so it's not going to happen. But we have to be squirreling away our resources from our local development in order to pay our local share when that comes up. When it comes up, if we don't have our local share, the project does not move forward. And we have disputes with Sandbag over what our local share should be because there's a lot of, for Mountain View, there's a lot of development on the north side with the Amazon building, and we dispute our local share. But the point is, this money is not something that is nailed down, because this is a project that might not happen for 10, 20 years. So there is no specific dollar to be had. All we have is experts who give an estimate, and it's a wild-ass guess. This what it is, and it is not anything more than that. So to try to give it any statistical significance beyond that is, you know, it's just a guess. It's admittedly a guess.
But Councilman Riggs, before you make estimates, you have to have a basis for those estimates.
This is probably...
You don't just stick your finger in the wind.
This is probably, this is probably building on information published by Sandbag.
It is.
Yeah, and we don't have any control over that.
But we also don't know what that information is. You may, because you're on the board. I have no clue.
But it doesn't really matter because Sandbag made a guess. I'm there at Sandbag, I know how they do this stuff. They're guessing for something 10, 15, 20 years in the future, and we're trying to do the same thing. So meanwhile, we're squirreling away our resources as we build out our community, and we hope that when the time comes, we'll have enough money. So if we sit here and try to nail down to the, you know, within 10% of the actual number, it's a fool's errand.
That's not what I'm suggesting. That's...
Well, then what is it?
These project, this, if you look at schedule, sorry, schedule G1, G1. Page 127. The only thing that's changed on that is the cost of the projects. We didn't change any of the information. I recall when the city manager called me up and said, "Hey, we got the information from," in those days, "Sandbag. Here's the projects, this is what they cost," and it's called a level of criticality estimate. In other words, there aren't plans, there are not drawn plans to do this yet. There are more larger global estimate of what it's going to cost to do it. They have not given the city manager new numbers since then.
But they have to know, they have to have some concept of what that project is going to look like.
No, they don't. No, they don't. And just to give you one example, I'll give you one example. A building burnt down on the north side of the freeway that changes the redevelopment of it, changes all of the Sandbag projects in the vicinity. And let's say, for example, we build on a greenfield, and we put in one of those cloverleaf things like they did on Tippit Canoe. That's a cheap project. But if they put in a big tilt-up, then you have to condemn a tilt-up. It could increase the cost by $100 million. So you can't tell what's going to happen 20 years in the future. It's a guess. It's nothing more.
And I think it's important... There's good analogies in medicine for that, which is a world you understand. Epidemiology doesn't just hold their finger out, they've, to the wind. They've got some kind of basis for making projections of probability.
And they use that basis. And at some point, we can't run everything down to ground. At some point, we have to trust what Sandbag has produced.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, that's an extreme interpretation of what I'm trying to...
No one has any, no one has any better figures than Sandbag right now.
Well, because they're actively involved in these projects continually, and so the costs are more relative.
The costs are going up. And that's what we're addressing here, is the fact that their original estimates have gone up in cost, and we're applying the same cost inflation factor to every one of these projects, even though some may have more right-of-way than concrete and vice versa. But that's, they, engineers do a global one where it's like maybe six or seven lines of estimates, concrete, street widening, estimated right-of-way. And they come up with a ballpark estimate, which it's not, it's not intended to be anything more than a working figure. And they get closer, they find out, oh, well, we can't put in six lanes. The right-of-way costs would be astronomical, more than the cost of the project, so they readjust. But these are the figures from Sandbag at the time and increased, and this is what they're going to expect of you at some point.
After the 2008 crisis, the price of construction dropped by 50%. Since then, it's gone up about triple. So the prices are extremely variable, depending on supply and demand, and both in construction materials and labor and profit. And you can't, if you just throw a number up on a dartboard, it's about as good as you're going to get. I'm not impressed that anybody can predict anything with any fidelity, even when a project is immediately anticipated. The engineer's cost estimate can be 50% above or 30% below the bids that come in. It's just, there's so much variability, there's not any ability that I believe anybody can predict these things in advance. And to just throw a number up there and run with it is the best we can do. That's my opinion.
So to help move this forward, one way or the other, not necessarily for approval, but just to move forward, I think we have to look at this in terms of, if we leave it the way it is now, we potentially don't get enough from the developers. If we approve this, then we do get money from the developers either way. It doesn't harm the community, it only benefits the community because that money is used for infrastructure.
And if they submit the project during the 60-day window, they get a discount.
Yeah.
The developer gets a discount that the community would have to make up. So to me, that's the urgency.
Right. So what we're talking about is the cost to the developer, and we're really arguing what they should pay, but in reality, we should be thinking about what's best for the community and what potentially...
Yeah.
I don't, I guess I don't see a downsides. I do agree with you, though, Dr. Daley, I 100% agree with you that it's hard to, especially for a mathematician, to understand this. I get that.
No, I'm not looking for .01 or .05 level of probability. That's not where I'm at at all. But in my judgment, after reading the report, there was, there was a lack of information that enabled, that would enable me to make a constructive and positive decision. Now, when my doctor tells me, "Don't smoke," I believe he or she has a basis more than holding their finger to the wind. And I don't see engineering, not to a .05 probability, I'm just saying that there should be some basis for the projections. And I see some of that, but not adequate in my judgment. Based on what the mayor said, he's saying that the cost would only be to the developer, not to the city. And so I understand that. I'm not comfortable that we're going to rush something through that some may or may not understand, just on that basis. But I understand two plus two equals four, but the report reads to me, two plus two equals five, it's to the benefit of the city.
Does it help that we intended to approve this last summer?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Does it help that we intended to approve this last summer?
I know, I didn't have this kind of detail. That's why at the very beginning, I said, "This may be a case where too much information is a disadvantage to whoever wants it approved."
Yeah, we actually thought we approved it last summer.
We did.
And it was an oversight.
Not in this detail.
And the urgency is just to catch people who want to slip in in the next 60 days and get a deep discount. That's the urgency.
Correct.
Yeah.
You can't go back to them.
And that's, and that's the right or wrong. We can't ever collect that money in our career if we make a mistake. Do we have a motion to go either direction with this?
I got a question.
Yeah, you already, Dusty made the motion.
Okay, that's right, you have a second.
Cool. Few questions on my end. So are we looking at the size by land or is it by square feet? Because I know it mentions here, single-story and double-story. So is it looking at the size of the dwelling or is it looking at the land itself?
The way that we currently charge residential projects is per unit, we're not looking at the size. If that's what you're asking.
Okay, then I might have gotten mixed up here. Is the proposal to look at it per unit or is it to look at it by size?
The proposal tonight is to adopt Appendix G, which we omitted from the study, as well as Appendix H, which are the findings of us choosing to charge impact fees for residential projects as a per-unit basis rather than square footage, which we've normally been doing, and we already do at this time. And just for clarification, we did adopt that structure in June of last year anyhow. But tonight, we're just asking to include the findings in the report as just a good measure.
Okay. Going off of that, when we say that the city is mindful that the state is encouraging smaller detached dwellings, are we saying we're kind of going counter to what the state wants to do by going on the per-unit basis? wants to do by, by going on the per-unit basis versus the land basis?
Yes.
My understanding is I think we capture more in terms of per unit, because as additional units are added, we would, we would be looking at more fees versus just a square-footage size of one-size-fits-all. And so if they add an ADU or something like that, that's in a sense a separate residence. We're actually collecting more fees based on that. Am I correct?
ADUs are separate from single-family residential. So I, I'm not understanding the question, but when it comes to ADUs, we...
That was just an example.
Okay.
So maybe I didn't...
But I think you have the correct idea.
So if, so if something was divided up by unit size, we would collect based on the unit number total versus just the property size, where we'd only connect one set of fees, correct?
Correct.
Yes, more, more or less? Sorry.
The state is square feet. Our proposal is per dwelling.
Okay, so I'm going to really dumb down what I'm trying to ask. Are we putting more of a burden on lower-income housing by going on the per-unit basis?
That's the way the math works out, yes. If you had a $30,000 impact fee, and you built a 1,200-square-foot home, and you built a 3,800-square-foot home, it is a bigger burden on it versus the cost to produce it. However, there is no empirical data to prove that your 1,200-square-foot unit creates any more or any less demand on the city's services than does the 3,800-square-foot. It just doesn't exist. If I were to ask the fire department, how many times did you go to big, single-family homes versus small, single-family homes? They'd look at me as if I had two heads. I'm happy to get, how many times did you go to a detached dwelling, period? That data's available. That's one of their in-first categories. Same thing with shares. If I were to ask them, how many times did you go to big ones versus small ones? First of all, the first thing they're going to ask me is, what's a big one? What's a small one? And that is the big nut to crack in going to square foot. You have to peg what the average square feet of your homes are going to be, because we're taking, let's say, 330 million, and we're dividing it by all the future development, which is X amount of homes. If we transfer it to square foot, and you miss that mark, again, either you're going to collect too much money, and you're going to have to give some back, unlikely, because things keep going up, or you're going to way under-collect. And then you're, you're going to come up short, and you're going to have to turn to the general fund. This is why the last five I've had adopted since July 1st, every city adopted with per unit, and they're ready to go to the mat over it. And section, or H, I wrote with, I want, I have to be careful how I say this. No city attorney wrote it, but some happened to read mine and made suggestions as to what I needed to change. So this has had three or four city attorneys' eyes on them.
Really appreciate that. That clarified it a little bit. From my understanding, so we're saying, because services used by a unit regardless of size, so if it's 1,300 square feet, 3,900 square feet, because the data doesn't exist, if they're using more resources than one another, we think the proper way to go forward with this is to charge on a unit basis?
I explained that in, in Appendix H, as to why, yes. In general, I'm saying that it's better for the city in long-term planning, capital planning, and determining how much you're going to collect.
Okay, so that makes perfect sense now. I, I think the question is, and I'd like some opinion from the council even, is it fair, again, if it's going to impact lower-income housing a little more than higher-income housing, while I understand the fees that it's going to collect, is it the right way to go about it, just from an equity standpoint?
So, so the, the challenge with that is that none of that pays the bills. So we have to look at what the cost is of our services, which are just skyrocketing. And so I, it, we have to be careful that we try not to apply that lens to everything in the world, because some things just, that's, it's just not appropriate for. We have to look at what it costs for us to provide services for every single resident. And if, if we're not providing that adequate level, then some people, whether they're low-income, high-income, whatever, they're going to miss out on services because we don't have them available. So we have to make sure, I mean, it kind of sucks to be in government at this time, and everybody thinks that we all have our hand out, but we have to, we have no control over the cost of a lot of these things. And if, if we, if we're not able to pay for it, then that's when our residents suffer. So I like to think people want to live here, no matter what their economic standing, because we provide a good level of service, whether it's in our infrastructure, whether it's our police or fire, whatever. And so I would hope that applies across the board. Yes, sir?
Yeah, my comment would be, let's say, developers were sensitive to the incentives put on them by the state government and their desires to have more low-income housing. Let's say they responded to that. Let's say we estimated that there would be 50%, 5,000-square-foot houses, and 50% 1,000-square-foot houses, and our fees will be five times higher for the 5,000 than for the 1,000. And then the developers go, man, that fee's too high for a 5,000, so I'm going to respond to that, that incentive, and I'm going to build all 1,000-square-foot houses. Well, our average cost was the equivalent of a 2,500-square-foot house, because it was 50/50, or 3,000, because it's halfway between 1,000 and 5,000. And if everybody gets a 1,000 deal, we would have to triple the price of a 1,000-square-foot house, because we need the equivalent of a 3,000, 3,000-square-foot house to provide the services. So this is another one of those things where be careful what you ask for. If you put incentives on things that result in underfunding of government services, you end up with San Francisco, as opposed to Little Melinda. We prefer Little Melinda. We know we need a certain amount per unit, because that's how our services are provided. So why not just charge that way? Because, you know, if, if they responded to it, we would end up tripling the cost of a 1,000-square-foot house fee anyway. It wouldn't, there would be no discount for having a smaller house.
If I can expand on that briefly. And, and some city will go with the square foot at some point, and they're going to have to tell you, building a 3,600-square-foot home, again, three times your 1,200, that you're going to pay three times as much. And what you're going to do is you're going to go to the city and ask, why? Can you prove that my home's going to create three times more than demand than that 1,200? And the answer is no.
Or you're going to sue over it.
I avoided that word, but I'm waiting for that lawsuit to happen.
Absolutely.
All right.
Sorry.
No, no, no.
Why does this require a four-fifth, four out of five vote?
Because urgency.
The urgency part, and, and I might add that the urgency one is only good for 30 days, so then we would have to do a second one in 30 days, similar, make the findings to cover the 60.
Last question. So Dr. Riggsby, I, I buy into your argument that you were making. The question I guess I would have is the underfunding. We would be funded in either way, right? Whether we go with the square foot basis or the per-unit basis? The fees would just be higher on the square, the square-foot part?
Well, at this point, the anticipated structures are already in the hopper. We know what's coming out. So yes, we could come up with the same amount. But what would happen in the future? If you have much higher fees for a larger house, but the same services are provided, then you would have ostensibly a response to that with smaller houses, but then you'd have to raise the fees to cover the services, because those small houses wouldn't collect it on a per-square-foot basis. So my point is, it's one of those things where you're chasing your tail, and you never quite catch it, because as they select smaller houses, you raise the fees, and there's no equity. What you have is smaller houses. And if smaller houses is the goal, then yes, it would achieve that, but getting a lower price per house is not what they would achieve, I don't think.
This is only affecting Area D and possibly the Canyon Oak areas?
No, 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 this is City Y.
Do we have any other development in the city that it would affect that we know of?
Well, none of the projects on the radar are low-income housing, so I'm not too concerned that right now, we're, we're shortchanging the state or anybody else. We're, we're looking at some higher-end developments that are coming, and I think we need to make the developer pay appropriately for them. So I think that's the point with our urgency here. After that, we could look at this again, and we will look at this again every five years, and I don't think there's even anything on the radar that, but we could always do it even before five years, right? I think what we're, what we're looking at is to capture a very specific thing here, and that's not low-income housing.
But there's a lot of development that's planned for out by where the mosque is.
Yes.
All that area is...
But that's high-end development.
It hasn't been submitted to us yet.
But, but we know enough that it's high-end. It's not low-income housing. So potentially, we run the risk of losing out money on a, on a, on a value statement that doesn't even apply to this particular stuff that's coming down the pipe. Does that make sense? And I'm, I'm good with looking at, at that stuff as appropriate to, to other projects to make sure we're doing those things correctly, but this one is very specific to something that's projected to be very, very high-end.
Yeah, and what, what I don't want to see is, when those projects come up, when the Nexus study finally says, okay, it's Mountain View's turn, it's California's turn, those two places where people in those new developments exit the city, I don't want to see us unable to participate in fixing those intersections, because we don't have enough money, you know?
Right, right now, they're...
Because the people buying these houses would be really mad if we never fix those intersections.
Some of the biggest complaints right now without those developments in place are those, are those interchanges, Mountain View and California.
Yeah, well, that's because the Nexus study is so old. It has Calif, it has Mountain View at the tail end of the county's priorities.
Right.
But since that Nexus study was done, that area has grown tremendously, and we're behind, you know, we're way behind on that. And if, and when they redo it, and we come up in the, in the priorities, we need to have the money in place to do the, the local share, or we don't get it done.
I, I didn't want to convolute this any further by, by looking at these, this priority or this numbering that's here on Appendix G1, because that does not coincide with what SBCTA has. I mean, these things are not even on the drawing board for 20-plus years, so that's a lot of the challenge right there, but...
Just a brief comment to respond to Dusty. I'm not worried about losing projects. We own a house in Pasadena. We have people begging, because there's no dirt left in Pasadena to build on, and maybe it wouldn't happen as quickly.
I'm not, I'm not talking about housing projects. I'm talking about interchange, infrastructure.
I, I, no, I understand.
We could, we could end up with a whole bunch of housing and no ability to get onto the freeway. That's what I'm worried about, from a Sandbag perspective.
Okay, looks like we've hashed this out. No further questions? Okay, we have a first and a second, so Madam President?
I just need a clarification on this, who made this second? Was that?
Yes, Dr. Lenhart.
Okay. And my second question was, I know the motion was just for the first, to adopt the first resolution, or is there going to be a second motion?
Well, if, if we can do them together, I say, my motion, I'll amend it to say it's both.
Are you friendly to that? We have a, okay?
Do it together.
Okay.
But then you'll need a four-fifth vote, or we need to break them in two parts.
And before we do vote, I'd say, I really appreciate the, the conversation on this, and it's probably something we should have delved into a little bit further last year, but this is definitely worth talking about and even bringing back for some future modification too, if we want.
So the motion is to adopt Council Bill R-202304.
May I ask a clarifying question before we take the vote? Again, I asked it before, but I want clarification from the city manager. What is the downside? What is the outcome if this does not get approved tonight?
Okay. Two resolution. The first one is to adopt the fee. The second one is urgency. If, if you're okay with the first one, then, then the fee will become effective 60 days from now. If, if you, if you approve the second resolution, then it will start immediately. That's different.
He wants to know what we potentially miss out.
On the increased fees, because the current fees are from 2015. 2015. And so all the other fees were adopted in June, but this, just this appendix dealing with the Sandbag fee was less, left off. So we would lose out on the difference between the 2015 fees and the current fees for 60 days.
So basically, what we didn't have, hold on, where am I here? Just a second. So what we didn't have in June is Appendix G1, that table.
Correct.
Did we have Appendix H?
No.
So we didn't have that either, because that's where my cockles rose.
Mr. Daley, Appendix H was actually not required, and it wasn't even required for this staff report either. I just did it as an abundance of caution to include it, that way we have findings on the record. But since we adopted it prior to July 1st, findings weren't required, and we weren't, we were okay to continue going as a per-unit basis as residential. And again, as a reminder, we've already adopted those fees. We're not asking you to re-adopt those fees or to consider that appendix, because that specific appendix has been adopted. These findings are just as added measure, as a safety concern, just to have them in place, even though they're not required.
So based on the projects that are pending, what kind of cumulative total are we talking about that we would lose? And what it would, I mean, we must have some idea what the fee increase is.
I think, I think it was estimated at like, what, 20, 17 to 20%?
15, 17 to 20%.
Was the estimate of difference?
The difference between 2015 and 2022.
Okay.
And, and that's the increase that Sandbag determined, the fees? So they're using the same percentage, same factor?
Right, the same percentage that were applied to city fees, city projects.
Same percent of what, was what? I'm sorry.
We applied the same percentage increase based upon, again, the Engineering News Record Cost Construction Index that we used on all of the city projects, like the city street projects, the city water and sewer projects. We used the same, same increase because they were all done at the same time.
Okay, so basically, the basis is Appendix G1 table, that the projected increase from Sandbag for those costs was 17 to 20% cumulatively?
No, we took, technically, we took the old project costs that they were given to the city back, I think it was even prior to 2015, and we increased that by the Engineering News Record. We did not go back to, to Sandbag. They, they wouldn't have given it.
So, all right, now, now, that's only confused me more. I thought that the change was based upon input from Sandbag on future projects.
It's the, they're not future projects. They're the same projects that were identified many years ago, when Sandbag first set up the whole system of charging cities by percentages.
Okay.
It's the same numbers, but we recognize that those numbers are probably increased because of inflation. So we increased it...
And you decided 17 to 20%? I thought that was Sandbag.
No, that's, that's, that's from the Engineering News Record.
What's that?
That's from the Engineering News Record, which is the... That's from the Engineering News Record, which is the document used by engineers everywhere for making estimates.
So if we're revisiting this because we hadn't submitted to Sandbag for input earlier, last June or July, what role did Sandbag play in our agenda tonight?
They gave us the original project's cost back in the day, and we're just increasing those by the same Engineering News Record that we applied to your projects that are within the city.
Okay, well, I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
And I hope someday to hear from the city manager in his glee when he says we got new numbers from Sandbag.
Madam Clerk?
Motion is to approve Council Bill R-202304, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California, establishing the fees pertaining to the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority Circulation, I'm sorry, the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority Circulation Related Projects, Appendix G, and including findings in support of imposing residential impact fees on a per-unit basis rather than square footage, Appendix H, within the Development Impact Fee calculation update and NEXUS report.
Were you gonna add? Were you gonna add O5 also?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Do we want that? Okay, yes. And also to adopt Council Bill R-202305, an urgency resolution of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California, immediately establishing the fees pertaining to the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority Circulation, I'm sorry, related projects, the, I'm sorry, the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority Circulation Related Projects, which is Appendix G, within Development Impact Fee calculation update and NEXUS report. And that would become effective immediately for 30 days unless extended by the City Council for an additional 30 days. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard? Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daley?
Epstein.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The motion carried by a voter of reason.
Okay, moving on to number three, a public hearing on the Canyon Ranch annexation. I'm sorry?
To be continued for the next meeting.
Oh, well, that's right. I'm sorry. All right, now, item number four. Minor use permit P-22-251.
But we need to open for the public hearing just in case they can't come to the next meeting.
Okay, all right. So, backup. Item number three. Anything we need to preface? Just open a public hearing?
Yes, you should open the public hearing in case there's someone here that would like to speak on it.
Okay. Okay, we're opening a public hearing on the thing we're not going to talk about. Seeing nobody come down. All right, I'm sorry, do we leave it open for the continuation or we close it?
You can close it. No one's here to speak.
Okay, thank you. That will be continued to May 9th. Item number four.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Duper, council members, members of the public. My name is Lorena Materita, and I am the Community Development Director for the City of Loma Linda, and tonight I will be presenting one public hearing item. The applicant is Eric Rodriguez. He's representing Loma Linda University House. He has submitted a minor use permit application requesting the approval of an incidental structure and use for the Loma Linda Medical Center, Loma Linda University Medical Center. Along with the minor use permit is a precise plan and design application for the design and the construction of a new 5,052-square-foot recycle and refuse facility that will house trash compactors and medical waste storage on an existing parking area of the old emergency department. The new facility will store solid waste, medical waste, recyclable materials, organic waste, and will also have a compactor for cardboard. With the addition of the new hospital and the legacy hospital that continues to operate, there's been an increase in the amount of waste they need to manage.
I'm sorry, I have to time out very fast. I forgot that this item might have a conflict interest. So I think you have to draw a straw on this item because it has to do with Loma Linda Hospital. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's a, so.
I don't, I don't think there's draw straws because there's three that are non, there's three that are non-conflicted.
Okay, so just you and you, okay.
Perfect. So there is still a conflict or?
Yeah, so there have to be, there have to be excuse because not conflict interest. I'm sorry.
My wife still works for the medical center, so.
Okay, so I'll wait to present until I leave, but I do just want to state that there is still a conflict on planning commission, and that's why we still continue to bring forward the university projects to City Council, and that way the audience is aware of that too.
Can I?
Okay, perfect. So, like.
Hold on, real quick. Do we want to go through the presentation or based on the staff report, what do you guys think?
Very true.
Okay.
I can, I can do a real, perfect. So just real quick, you guys, yes.
When we're talking about a incidental facility that will be incidental to Loma Linda University, I'm confused. What is an incidental facility?
Trash enclosure.
It's not the primary use at the site, so it's accessory to the primary use. That's what we mean, and that's how it's defined in our code, so that's why we're using that terminology throughout the staff report as well. And so the code actually states that if there's an incidental structure or use at the site, it requires a minor use permit. And for the actual design and the construction is the precise plan of design application.
I have a simple mind. I need.
All right, I think your questions are excellent, actually, so thank you.
And this is normally the type of thing to be handling, handle that planning commission level, but because of the conflict, that's why it ends up.
That's absolutely true.
And is it trash enclosure?
Yes, yeah.
So then I will give the three-minute version then. So, real quick, so you know, it's going to go at the site where we have the old and the new hospital. This is the demolition plan. Basically, what's being removed is 25 existing parking spaces, but don't you worry, they're still going to have sufficient parking throughout the medical campus. This is the site plan, so what's being constructed is a little over 5,000 square feet. That is a new refuse facility. Access is going to be through Campus Street as it always has been for this parking lot.
Where is it? Do you have a pointer?
Yes, so on the site plan, so if you can see the red, I know it's a very small dot. This is the, it's right here, and I'll show the floor plan in the next few slides. So that's the 5,000-plus-square-feet new refuse facility. Previously, it had 25 parking spaces. Those parking spaces were used by facility staff, as well as, I believe that they had about 10 to 15 parking spaces for emergency vehicles, which now have been moved towards the, to the medical center of the new site. This is the image of the floor plan. Again, it's going to be a, there's going to be trash compactors, it's going to have a medical waste storage, and basically what they're going to do is consolidating all of their waste locations into one giant facility. Elevations, they did, staff work with them. We asked that they provided these grid-like designs for future crawling vines to help decorate the sides of this eight-foot CMU block wall. Here's a render. It is going to match and be compatible with the existing buildings at the site. And as you can see in these next two renders, that wall is not, along with the crawling vines, creates like a visual buffer from the street and the surrounding buildings as well. All projects require environmental review because it's less than 10,000 square feet. It is exempt from sequel, further sequel analysis. As with all projects, we do notify the public. Anybody within 300 feet of the boundaries of the site get notified by mailing, and we also posted our regular locations, as well as the project site and the city website, the notice of hearing. Findings and conditions are required and are included in your staff report. So to conclude, the applicant has made every possible effort to provide the most appropriate design and layout. It complies with the goals of the general plan as well as the institutional healthcare zoning district, and that's where it's at. It is compatible with the existing and future uses in the area. As I just mentioned, conditions are in place to ensure appropriate compliance with city standards, and findings were provided in support of the current project. So I'm asking three things from you guys tonight. I'd like you to determine the project and descend from sequel, approve the minor use permit, and approve the precise plan of design to construct the 5,052-square-foot refuse recycling facility. So that is my quick presentation. I am here for questions.
Sure. Good. Dr. Daley?
I'm ready to move it if you're, unless you have a question on a public hearing. Go ahead.
My house right at the corner of campus, and I got a letter from the city. That's why I'm.
Can you come further? So it's officially, we'll open the public hearing and come on down. You can.
Yes, hi. I work for Loyola University almost, hi, my name is Vicky, and I worked for Loyola University for almost 30 years, and my house right on Campus Street, and I got a letter from the project. I'm concerning that are they gonna take my house away to build this project, or is it gonna be so noisy, so dusty, a trash compactor, and that's gonna be a huge concern for the community in that area? So that is my question and concern.
Currently, it's a parking lot. And, and, right, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, okay?
Yes.
So, so, so currently, it's a parking lot, and the trash is always being picked up at the university anyway. So right now, because of the parking lot, because now emergency room is moved to the new building.
Correct.
There's more space available for parking at a new facility. So the university wants to utilize this space for that, the trash truck can come pick up the trash. They do it anyway, but just move it to this location.
So the corner of campus for those houses is not going to be a?
No, this is, be on existing parking lot.
It's closest to the bridge.
The one that you, there, that one right there.
So you see where the hospital's at? It's literally right adjacent to the hospital.
Okay.
So right now, they have compactors, I believe, north and south of that hospital, and they're just consolidating in this parking lot. So the compactors are already there. They're just consolidating now.
I see. That makes me feel much better, like being next to the trash compactor. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming up. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? We'll close the public hearing. Yeah, absolutely. Come on down.
My husband and I live directly across the street from the parking garage at Campus in Barton, and having this sort of facility so near to our house is a little bit upsetting. And I previously thought it was going to be in some part of the parking garage or right beside it, and you, from the map you have here, it looks like it's a little bit farther away. But what kind of bad odors are we going to have in our neighborhood? And how is it going to affect people who live very close to this facility? Not quite as bad as I thought, but still very, very close. And what is Loma Linda University doing to protect the people who live in the area? And I have to say, it's been a little bit hard the last few years. We've had three parking garages and a hospital built within a block of our house, so we have some concern.
Eric, you may want to come down and address this a little bit.
Eric Schulte, I work for the hospital and the university. Appreciate the concerns. Just to clarify, Jarrod noted this, the functions that are occurring, those are already occurring today. This is really an operational improvement. All of the waste and the disposal and the process we have, that all occurs today in the same location. This is an improvement operationally to consolidate and improve the way that we do that. It's currently kind of at two locations. We have, for example, our, the cardboard compressor we have is at another location, trash compactor's in our location. So it's an improvement. It's new equipment. We do have increased foot, we do have an increased footprint with the new building, so this is going to help deal with some of that. But for the most part, everything that's going to be occurring there already occurs in the very immediate proximate location. Given the type of construction it is, I don't, I understand and appreciate there's been a ton of construction going on around this area for residents like you. This is going to be, from a construction perspective, a very minor project. I don't expect it to have significant impact, but in terms of kind of concerns about it being a waste and refuse yard so close to residences, everything that occurs here already is occurring today. It's really, I would view it as, it would be in any, any, there'd be no material difference to what you experienced today there. It's going to be an operational improvement. In fact, it's probably going to be an improvement from our current condition because we don't have a CMU wall protection currently around the way that we do waste. Now it's going to be a concrete block wall with potential, you know, some aesthetic improvement. So if anything, I would view this as an improvement to our current condition that you, that already exists there in that location.
Where are those facilities currently?
Do you want to go back to that, Lorena, real quick?
Yeah.
I can, you have the, let's go to the site plan that shows kind of the map.
You can use a pointer. There you go.
Which one's the pointer here?
Just the red.
The red.
Let's go back to you.
Sorry. So this is going right here. The current location this takes place is here and here. So it's all in the same, very near vicinity, right? It's all in the same parking lot. We're taking functions that occur here and here, where we do storage, and we have trash disposal, et cetera, and we're consolidating those with new updated equipment. It's going to help us for operational improvement right in this area. So it's, from how proximate it is to your house, it's not going to be any different, and it's going to be an improvement aesthetically from Campus Street.
But I didn't know it was there before.
It, just because it was originally built and designed, you know, back when the building was originally done in 67. So, you know, I understand that. I just, I would, I would want to be able to ease some concerns that I would not expect any material difference for you or immediate residents as a result of this project.
Well, thank you.
And then, I don't know if this helps or not, but in terms of bio-waste, like handling, it's very stringent, and so there's, there shouldn't ever be a time you smell or see or anything like that. I mean, that would actually violate quite a few rules that the hospital doesn't need to be on OSHA's radar or anything like that, right? Is it OSHA, OSHA, I don't know, one of those OSHA ones. So I would imagine you probably won't even notice it. Clyde, did you have any questions?
She answered everything. She asked the right question.
Good.
I don't think there was any odor before, and I don't expect it to be different now. In fact, I don't think, you're not dealing with material that has an odor.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I think Madam, oh, I'm sorry, do we have a motion here?
Yeah, I move minor use permit P-22-251 and precise plan of design application P-22-253.
Do we need to do the determine part two?
You can just say it's recommended, probably.
Second.
Motion is to determine that the project is eligible, I'm sorry, yes. Motion is to determine that the project is eligible for a Class 1 exemption from California Environmental Quality Act sequel pursuant to Section 15301E, which applies to an addition to an existing facility that is 10,000 square feet or less and all public services are available, and approve minor use permit P-22-251 for the proposed incidental structure for the Loma Linda University Medical Center, which is the, to construct a recycle refuse facility, which is an allowed use pursuant to Loma Linda Municipal Code, Section 17.44.020. And to approve a precise plan of design, P-22-253, to construct a 5,052-square-foot refuse recycle center to house trash compactors and medical waste storage. The site will The site will be enclosed within an eight-foot-high CMU block wall. The project will be located at the northeast corner of Barton Road and Campus Street, more specifically at one one two three four Anderson Street, within the institutional health care zone and land use designation based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daly?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Wait till our colleagues join us. Milford, are you here for seventeen?
I congratulate you on your expeditious treatment of that item.
All right, we have the consent calendar. I have a first and a second, or no, we need a second for the consent calendar.
I just wanna make a, is there a motion?
Uh, yes, yes.
Second.
Okay. I just wanna comment that, uh, um, on number nine, that the walking track up at Holden Crooks Park is great. I've already had some kudos on it from people in my neighborhood and my wife and I are using it and it's great. The only, only concern is if the lights could be brighter, but we can talk about that another time. Okay, okay. But that's a great. The other thing is on number ten, I've had two people, um, when they're crossing, when they're coming south on Mountain View across the bridge and they see the ball field lights all on and nobody playing, I didn't know what to tell them.
It's on camera.
So, so what happened is the light's on, but they, they just went home and they, they were turned off by itself. And they pay for it, by the way.
And what?
That the people that use the ball field.
People that lease it pay for the.
They pay for the lighting, yes.
Okay, I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Okay. Mr.? One comment and one question. So comment for number nine, again. Same thing as I said last time. If we could please get a picture, um, we have a completed project, just to see what it kinda looks like. Uh, and then question for number seventeen.
Uh, Milford, you're up.
Under what conditions or have we ever in the past actually had to?
Yes, yes. What happening is we have, in to tie with our neighbor city, city of redlands, city of San Bernardino and, uh, Loma Linda University. And so this is in case we have major earthquake, we have pipeline, uh, break, that we have to utilize the water from our neighbor city. Have we used it before? Yes, is what happened when our wells are our commission to get repaired. We have to purchase the water from the city of San Bernardino.
Milford says he's gonna give us free water.
No. And, and we never use it for city redlands, but it's just safe to have it. We do provide water for, for emergency for Loma Linda University from time to time. But we keep, we sell it to them, but not give it to them, so.
Motion is to approve, approve the consent calendar as submitted. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daly?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Consent calendar was approved.
Thank you very much. Nothing under old business or new business. Let's move on to reports of council members.
A quick question. A couple meetings ago, I don't know how it came up, but I asked about the, the little park down there on Mayberry. You know, as you come around the corner there.
Yes, 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 yes.
Did you or anybody ever go look at it and see if we can do something to kind of beautify it a little bit?
Yes, we'd be happy to, to do. We have been doing a lot of improvement to our city park. And we have a lot of people use the basketball field there.
Yeah, the basketball field, but on the other side of the street, that's a little one on the corner. Is that not maintained?
The one in the corner is, is no field, just a habitat area.
Is that, I thought it was supposed to be a little park in there.
No, it's habitat.
So, okay, well then keep the habitat.
What's the native species?
Native species, yeah.
What are they?
I don't know. Uh, we, we get the grab to, to put in the habitat along San Mateo Channel and, and so.
I thought right there were curved, right across from Juanita Street, that little curve on the corner. I thought that was supposed to be a tiny little park. No.
Doesn't have a bench there.
Is.
Yeah, there's like a bench there or something.
Yeah, there's a bench, there's a bench there. That's about it. But I, I, the rest is just gravel and, and trees.
Well, good job then.
Yeah.
It's not what it's supposed to be.
Along those lines, I heard a citizen comment that the park that we have, whether it's a park or not, that's under the transmission lines?
Yes.
Said that it's getting kind of junky looking. Can we prioritize that a bit?
Yes.
Okay.
And I had one person talk with me just yesterday about on Barton Road going east, just west of the, uh, Loma Linda Surgical Hospital there, there's a whole apartment complex. And I was asked how come they can have weeds this high in their median and we control the others? So I said.
It, it, no, 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 no.
Lizards and birds.
Yes, yes. That, that one, the apartment maintained the medians. That's why we need, we have been contacting. No, we, we, no, the apartment. We maintain the, the heart of surgical hospital now. Remember, we used to let them maintain it. Right, and now, and now we are doing it now. So, so, but apartment, they insist they wanna do it themselves. So they keep contacting them to, to, yes. Eric's gone, but. By the way, Eric and I, and Lorena too, we have a monthly meeting, uh, so keeping communication with the hospital. What's going on, what's, what's on our list and so forth, so.
So when we, we, um, we heard earlier about some of the, the weeds and stuff on Juanita, when is our next weed abatement inspection start? Should be due, right? Getting started with that or?
Weed abatement is on the vacant field.
Yeah, but she described, she described vacant.
I, I can, you can ask Tom.
She was describing some vacant lots. So. Cause it's possible that will get included anyway, but just curious. Okay, sorry. Um, anything else? Any reports of officers?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to the housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Again, this is an opportunity for anyone wishing to speak on the housing authority. Please come on down. Seeing nobody, we'll move on to the only thing on the, on the list, which is the consent calendar.
Move it.
First and a second. Madam Clerk?
Motion is to approve, approve the consent calendar on the housing authority agenda as submitted. Councilman Jindal? Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daly?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. New business, any reports of officers, members, seeing none, we'll adjourn that. Move into the successor agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted here?
No, sir.
Okay, again, opening up to the public to come on down if there's anything you would like to speak on related to the successor agency. Seeing nobody, we'll close that and move on to the consent calendar. We have a first and a second. Madam Clerk?
Motion is to approve the consent calendar on the successor agency as submitted. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Daly?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion carried.
That concludes all of our agendas. Thank you for coming up.